Hello and welcome to the January 10th, 2023 Select Board Meeting for the Town of Berwick. There we go. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the entire board present, town manager, town clerk, members of the public, and special guests. Can we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have the approval of our meeting minutes from December 27, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second move.
Motion is second. Any further comments? All those in favor, mark up the stands because he is present, and we are all set there. Next, we have a first public comment. This is separate from the discussion we will have soon for the Berwick Water Company, so is there any public comment not about that? Alright, I will close the first public comment, and that brings us to our public hearing for the, on the main water company and Berwick Operations Contract. James, can you give us a little background?
Absolutely. So the reason for tonight is to hear your questions, and the reason for considering this contract is the Town of Berwick Water Department has been faced with some operations challenges and some staffing challenges. Two fines, level four operators is, as proves, challenging. Right now, we have an interim water operator from York, and I think Main Water has helped us over the past couple of months. They've been there, and we've been considering our contract, and this contract would include water operations. So that includes customer service, billing, administrative services, routine operations, and maintenance services and non-routine capital services. So I know one of the first questions would be, is this going to cost money for the taxpayers? And that answer is no. Is it going to cost a rate increase? The answer to that's also no. Going to this contract will not cause a rate increase. If you could look at our, we have a rate increase that has already been planned to go into effect for July 1, 2023, and that is to cover the cost of our water bond and water improvement project. So the cost for contracting with Main Water is $22,000 per month. That's in the contract that is also available online. We have, under the news section of the town website, it's titled "Berwick Water Operations and Main Water Company." You can go there. There's a repository of information. Main Water was here at the previous Select Board Meeting. That video is on that page. We were updating frequently asked questions, so any questions and answers that, answers that are, or questions that are answered tonight will be on that page as well. So the contract is available right now for your review, and the cost for typical staffing of the water department is $24,592 a month, and that pro forma that shows the town costs are available as well. So it does, it does constitute a slight cost savings. So again, tonight's to hear your questions and comments on the contracts, and I'll kick it back to the chair.
Alright, yes, and before we get to any public questions, I just wanted to reiterate a few concerns that I had seen online. This is, should we enter into this contract, the Main Water Company will not have control over rates. They will not be able to change rates. That's still under the town's purview. We control that. They do not own our water plant or our water lines. The town still owns them. They are just going to be operating them for us under contract. The upgrades to the water plant that have already been planned for years to deal with previous issues of high manganese and drought conditions, those plans are still going through. Those plans are not going to cost more. They're not going to, they're still on the same timetable, and basically, once they're completed, if this contract goes through, Main Water will just have a more advanced plant in which to operate. So with that being said, any member of the public can come forward and ask a question. Just come up. Anybody?
Is Main Water going to speak?
Main Water, is there anything that you want to add?
I don't have anything to add. I do appreciate the invite two weeks ago.
If you could step to the microphone, please.
I do not have anything else to add. Appreciate the invite tonight and as well as the invite two weeks ago. If the town is interested, still interested in the contract agreement, we're prepared and happy to do it and to start the conversions that we had talked about two weeks ago, and thanks for having us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Where are you guys from?
Oh, please.
That was the only question.
Oh, sure. The question is, where are they from?
Yes, Main Water Company's office is based out of Saco, Maine.
May we ask a question?
Yes, go right ahead.
I'm sorry to engage you in calistatics here, but just so that, the question is being asked. One of the reasons that we've had, people have known we've had a shortage of operators there effectively, so you have additional resources should we have a problem here in Berwick that you could draw from to back up any issues that may occur here in Berwick. Is that correct?
That's correct. So we would, we would, and in our, in our plan, putting together this proposal, we had put together internally a staffing plan to staff, and of course, any water operation is at risk of if you lose someone, if someone leaves, if you need to move to a termination, if someone gets sick, all of those things that put you at risk. Around the state, we have, we have 60 employees in water operations, 60 water professionals, that we in the past have moved around when needed. So we're certainly prepared to do that for Berwick, but we're prepared to do that with all of our systems as well.
But they, they, we don't have to worry about employees or staffing or anything. It's nothing to do with us anymore.
That, under the agreement, that would be Main Water's responsibility. That's correct, Mark. Yep.
If you got a question, go ahead.
Yeah, please ask if you got a question.
Where are the employees going that already work for the water company? If we're going to replace them with these guys, we don't need them, right?
They get off of the job, right? Does this employees get off of the job? No?
Right now, right now, we, there's only one full-time employee in the water department that is employed by the Town of Berwick. We have another employee who's basically contracted out through York County, right?
York, York Water District.
Yeah, York Water District. So, and so essentially, under this new contract, they would cease being an employee of the town, and if they want to continue, you know, working for, working in the town or working, then they would apply for a job with Main Water and get a job through them. But from our perspective, we wouldn't have, we would not directly pay any water employees anymore.
Right. Which was one of the issues we had is maintaining certified water operators.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And that's why it's important to have those backup, because if we have issues that come up, they have the resources to say, okay, this person's out. Let's move somebody else in to ensure that we don't go without a licensed operator.
Could I just get your name for the record, please?
Who, who?
Yeah.
Bob.
Bob, and your address?
Berwick.
Could you share your last name?
Thompson.
Thank you.
Just for the record, she has, she has to ask that for the minutes, because this is a public hearing. They have to know who is asking the questions, whether they're residents of Berwick, that type of thing. So it's not prying into anybody's affairs or anything, so.
The one question I have is, we pay for town water and sewer.
If you could step to the mic, please, because people at home are listening also. They can't hear you when you're sitting in the audience.
We pay for the town water and sewer, but I live out on Guinea Road. I use my own water and my own sewer. So my vote in this shouldn't have anything to do, because if I have to pay for town sewer already, when the town runs the line by my property, I'm going to have to have a pump to pump the crap up the hill. I've been paying for the sewer this whole time, correct?
No, the, you, no, the, well.
We're not paying for the sewer.
Yeah.
It was on my bill. I haven't seen my bill for two years, but the wife has been taking care of it.
You've been paying a sewer bill?
Yes, sir.
You live on Guinea Road?
Yes, sir.
Damn thing doesn't go down that far.
That's what I'm trying to tell you. But I still had to pay a sewer bill and water. I called the town manager up and told him, when my well goes, I'm coming down for water.
That doesn't seem right, does it?
It's two separate bills, because it's two separate departments, and the sewer especially is sort of their own quasi municipality. So that seems really odd that you would get a bill from them.
I looked for the bill. The wife couldn't find in time for me to get here. I was running late as it was. I can bring it down to the town hall and show you.
But you bring them right down the sewer plant.
Well, just for clarification, the Berwick Sewer District is separate from the town here. They are their own entity. They make their own rules. They go through their own rate increases. So sewer has nothing to do with us directly. As far as the water.
You get a water bill too?
I'm not sure about the water bill. I know the sewer was on there. I was like, what do we pay in sewer for? We don't even use the town sewer.
As far as the water and the sewer also is, is, we all pay for it. I live on Cemetery Road, and town water and sewer doesn't go by my house, but is, in our budget every year, there's a line item for us to pay the water department and the sewer department, the sewer for the municipal facilities, but the town also, all of us also pays for the hydrant fees and things like that, you know, for the fire protection. So, no, people say that, no, I'm not on it. It doesn't affect you. It does in a way, you know. We all pay for some of it.
Oh, yeah. But we don't get a separate bill.
Right, no, no. It's all included in the taxes and the budget.
Right. You don't even see it in your tax bill.
Right. Well, just like the school tax. I mean, everybody pays that. The people in town all vote numbers. All schools, so they get schooled. Alright, thank you.
No problem.
Peter Hasham, Kenny Road. Question I have is, everybody knows the Town of Berwick has a real problem with the water. Okay, it comes out of the Summer Falls River, correct? Been doing this for years. So is this going to solve the problem for all the people in town that have this problem constantly? Seems like year after year, there's something going wrong where they're going to get bottled water or whatever. It don't go directly to me, because I don't have, I got my own well water, but I know people in town that, you know, been putting up with this for a long time. So the question is, is this going to solve their problem?
This is going to have.
This is two separate issues.
Yeah. The issue that we've had with the water in town has been mostly due to drought during the summer months, higher levels of manganese. The plant upgrades that have already been planned and paid for and, well, got money for and everything like that, those are going to address those issues. Those issues are already, we're doing plant upgrades into this year and into 2024. They're hopefully going to be finished by winter 2024, so basically, we're building like half a new plant, basically.
Well, you, you know, you did upgrades before, and they haven't seemed to do the trick for the people.
This is not, this is a completely different, this is a, a.
How many times have we heard that story? It's a different story. The question, you know, I have to believe it to see it.
In terms of this, this won't affect that one way or the other. This is just about the operation of the plant.
Well, it should reflect that. We don't want to see brown water, right?
No, of course.
You're going to help us out with that? Main Water?
So what are they actually going to do then?
They're going to operate the water plant. We still have to say, if we approve this contract.
So you're telling me that the town can't operate the plant itself efficiently?
We can. We've been having trouble keeping it stacked.
So you're paying them $22,000 a month?
Yeah, we're spending more than that anyway. We're spending more than $22,000 a month at town. So we're actually saving money by going to Main Water.
If you put one more employee in there.
We're saving 20 grand a year on it. What, anything else I don't know about? It's a savings from what the town's paying.
If I, if I may, is a little bit of history. Mike and I have been dealing this for almost nine years since we've been on the board, and the problem has been over the years is the plant wasn't, the plant before wasn't operating efficiently. There was regular maintenance that wasn't being done properly. There were other things that could have been being done there that weren't being done there, and that led to some of the turnover that we've had recently with the personnel at the plant trying to change things and get things working again. As far as the water quality is, two years ago, three years ago, we started the process of looking for money to upgrade the plant. Somersworth gets their water from the river also. They use a slightly different system to filter their water and treat their water, and what we're looking to do is to upgrade ours so we have a similar system. So that hopefully will take care of that problem. What Main Water does is they have this, the daily operational, make sure that the chemicals are put in properly, make sure that the plant is run properly, you know, so is, we're going to give them, they have to work with the existing plant now. We're scheduled to start construction on the new part of the plant this year and have that finished in the winter, fall or winter of 2024. And at that time, hopefully, that should take care of all the problems we've been having with that brown water. The contract we're looking at with them would run until that time, and at that time, it'll be up to the town again whether we renew their contract or we take it all back in ourselves and hire our own personnel again. But like everything else over the last several years with the pandemic and everything, is finding good help is hard to find.
But you're getting water out of Summer Falls River, and that river is, no way it's near being clean.
No, that's why we need an upgraded plant.
Isn't there any other source of water you can get?
We had test borings done around town.
Isn't there any other source, like you can't do a well?
We're just telling you, we had test borings done to try to find well water. We couldn't find it.
Well, we found water. We couldn't find enough that would produce, we couldn't find a well that could produce enough volume that the town needed.
400 gallons a minute.
Yeah.
Well, tap into South Berwick. They got more than they can use.
Then you got to pipe it all the way down here, so there's a huge expense on.
A million dollars a mile?
A million dollars a mile to run the pipeline, we're told.
South Berwick has excellent water. They have wells.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Who else?
Please.
Jamie Blood, I own Corner Point Brewing. So water's a little.
Important.
Slightly. Just a real quick question with, if, with Main Water taking, if they're going to take over, with a fully staffed water department, are there any upgrades or any changes we'll see this year? Improvements, say, like with an actual fully staffed?
I would say the changes are probably going to be slight. I mean, I would, I mean, this year was bad for a number of reasons, but mostly because it was a huge drought this year, and it was real bad. We're hoping we can skate through 2023, 2024 without a major, major drought like that one. But if it's, if it's just as bad this year as it was last year, then there's not going to be much difference that they're going to be able to do.
Well, I think we should address that to Main Water. So ask that question to Main Water.
Yeah.
He's the one that's going to be running it. What's the story?
Sure.
Yeah, so, and as, as the, as, it's a good question, and as the Select Board highlighted, they're, they're working with Wright Pierce Engineering, who, and working with a project manager named Dan Flag, who we've worked with on several projects across the state. And what they're specifically working on, or what their specific challenge in that facility is, is filtration for manganese. So that is a surface water plant, and it's a filter plant. It's designed to filter, but in the, in the drought, in the, when the water is low and the iron and manganese levels rise, those filters are unable to perform the way they should. So what, what Wright Pierce has, is currently working on, and we've had a chance to talk to Wright Pierce as well, is a, is a prefiltration project. So to get rid of the majority of that iron and manganese before it hits the current plant. Are there ways that our operators can optimize the current facility once we have our eyes on it? Very possible, but we can't stand here and promise that, because we, we need to get in and thoroughly learn how to run the facility, and we have the operators to do that. I, in speaking to Wright Pierce, they have a high level of confidence they'll be able to address the issue. So I think whatever optimization that we can do this year, hopefully, we don't have a drought. And then to get this project online, that is something that we also know how to do. We know how to work with a consulting engineer to see a project through. But as far as promising that there's not going to be a water quality issue in town before that project is complete, I don't think we can do that, but, but we can optimize it, you know, really the best that we can.
Right. You'd be more on the ball than we are.
Sure. They'll be on the ball as much as they can.
Yeah, and, and, and to the, to the staffing front, there's a very specific rule from the state of Maine, and it's, and it's, it comes from the EPA where the water regulations come from. It's filtered down through the main drinking water program, and the facility that you run is given a class of treatment. This one is a Class Four, and at any point, if you don't have a Class Four operator running the facility, you're in violation. You're in violation of the rules. You don't have assurance that the water going out the door is safe to drink. And that was the concern of the drinking water program, and that's the challenge for any water system is having, having Class Four operators, Class Three operators, whatever you need to do. I think that's the solution that, that we bring and we're happy to bring, and it is a challenge there. It's harder to find operators than it's, than it's ever been before, so.
That's, that's the thing. As you spoke here from Corner Point, we don't want to have bad water for you. All these people are going to move in next door. We don't want that to happen next door. We want to encourage people to come in. That's one of the reasons why we have the Main Water here. That's what they do. What do we know? Really, we don't know anything.
And finding the licensed operators is getting more and more difficult.
It's terrible.
I'd like to, I'd like to address the question about rate increases also. As a public utility, the water department and the sewer department also have to go through the Public Utilities Commission in order to get rate increases, and we went through that process several years ago. They okayed an increase at that time. The same thing, we had public hearings. We went through the process, and they broke it down into two separate years so that it wouldn't all hit at once. And the second part of it is hitting this July 1st, correct? So that rate has already been increased. It's already in the pipeline. It has nothing to do with what's going on right now. Any further increase down the line, again, would have to come to a public hearing again. The Public Utilities Commission would be involved and would go through that process again.
But that would be left up to Main Water to tell us that. They need a rate increase.
Well, no, because, no, because the, the way, essentially, the way this is going to work is that they are collecting the fees that we set. We set the price. They're going to collect them, and they're going to give it to us. We're writing them a check for their work. If we decide that there's some sort of imbalance that needs to be corrected, then that's when we come into play. As long as we're paying them, they're not going to care. They're not going to care if the rate is low or high or mid or what.
Well, I would hope they would pay attention to that rate, no, because let me tell you something. They're not going to be dropping the price. We're going to keep rates that are affordable, and they're going to make us be able to put money into the, into the water system in this damn town.
I agree.
So they're going to be telling us, I hope, that, 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 look, we need to spend some money. We need to get a rate increase, and that, after that, we take off. I would hope you would.
Yeah, Mark, and that's what we had talked about two weeks ago was the financial services piece that as we're in the transition in our financial controller, we weren't comfortable putting in the contract. We think we'd be prepared to do in a year. So for some of our other operational contracts, we also do some, we do the monthly books, but we also walk the municipality through some forecasting and, and what to expect and understanding, which you, which, which this group already does, but understanding the implications of your capital investments and rising chemical prices and labor and what that means to water rates. So that's a, that, you know, what we'll do in the first year, Mark, is as we see opportunities for improvement, letting you know what the risks are and what the prices are and informing the town. As we agreed to in the, in revising the agreement, meeting with the Select Board twice a year to give an update on the system, in the, in the financial service piece that we would love to offer, once we get our feedback under us and fully staff, we could also offer some of the budgeting and forecasting services as well.
You're involved in the water industry every day, so you know of the state grants or federal grants out there that might help us out. We're not paying attention all the time to that type of free money. So they're basically going to be our partner.
Yeah, there's, there's, and there's better, there's more opportunities now, really through the drinking water program after the passing of the infrastructure bill, and we work very closely with the drinking water program to go through those applications, so we would, we'd certainly partner with the town on that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the public? Are there any comments that the current water plant director would like to make?
I think we're okay. That covers everything.
Any further comments from the board?
I just, I just want to go over again. You know, is Mike and I are approaching our ninth year here on the board, and this is something that we've been dealing with for nine years, and it was the problem before that also. Is that for the, the first couple of years, there wasn't much problem with the water, but then that first drought hit, and I'll never forget when we were talking to the chief operator at that time and talked about it, and he said, oh, brown water happens every summer, you know? It'll clear up eventually, and that wasn't acceptable to us, and that's when we all started looking into, you know, what we needed to do to get this plant up to where it should be. And as I said, you know, in the past, is things weren't maintained properly, so it wasn't working efficiently. It's been a struggle, and we know that. I've been fortunate. I don't have town water, but I do feel your problem. Well, even if there was no, no problem with the water, since I still like my well water.
The thing is, we have new people that want to move into town on the edge, and we've got to make sure that we have.
Not even that. It's serving the people that are already here.
Yeah, both of them.
You know, is, and unfortunately, is the, the plant is showing its age, and the processes don't work like they should anymore, and people expect more, which they should. So I think this is moving in the right direction. I think this will help, and I'm hoping that, especially once we get the new part of the plant up and running, that I won't be hearing about this anymore.
Yeah.
And again, I might not be here.
I think we're going to see an improvement right off of them. Are you ladies on town water?
I am.
Is that why you're here?
I want to know where, if you would have found a new source.
No, we tried. We drilled all over town. The problem, the problem had been, is, as Mike said, is close to the plant. We couldn't find a source, you know, with enough, you know, to deliver, and.
Grow on each end of town?
And it's definitely, the problem again comes down to having to, having to pipe it to the plant. And a million dollars a mile is what we were quoted as a price several years ago, which now probably a million and a half dollars, the way everything else is going up. Is even if you just go a couple miles out of town, is your piping is going to cost as much as your plant does, so.
But if you have ideas and different ways we might be able to go about it, come to the meeting and talk to us. You know what I mean? If you've got a place you think you can make a great well, I'd love to know it.
Because we know there's water over on the south. And we know there's water over on the south side. We know there's water up behind behind the the old high school up at
There's water up by the sod farm.
Well, again, it comes to cost effectiveness.
Yeah, and basically at a certain point, it comes to we have to build a whole new water plant wherever the well would be. And if we're going to build a whole new water plant, might as well upgrade the current water plant for the same price and, you know. So if there's no further comment, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we enter into a contract with Maine Water Company as presented to us.
I'll second it.
Any further comments? All those in favor? All right. I will close this public hearing.
Let's get that paperwork and sign it. Get it off our backs.
I'll get it to you. Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, thank you.
And contrary to popular belief, we encourage people to come to our meeting.
Yes, we welcome people to come to the meeting. How many times? Thank you, thank you. Nope, it's got plenty of
Yes. Okay.
All right. Next, we have the reports of committees. We have NOM. Department reports, we have NOMs.
Safe travels.
And presentations.
Thank you.
Josh Jones, Recreation Director. Hi, Josh.
Hello.
So glad to finally meet you.
You as well. I thought I met you the other day via email. I got a funny story for you about that one.
All right, so Josh has been set to be our new Recreation Director. Josh, tell us a little about yourself.
I can start just throw just through the Rec Recreation Director search, we had about 25 applicants. And I think there's a pretty clear consensus from the Rec Director Search Committee that Josh stood right out. He's certified, comes with years of director experience. And just thrilled to have him in in town. He's up on the second floor with Jody and I. And he's already been a great fit and already working on a host of projects. So just happy to have you in town.
Thank you. Yeah, I showed up here on December 20th from Northwest Colorado. Two cars, two dogs, two kids, 2,400 mile drive.
Why would you move from Colorado to Burwick, Maine?
I knew that was coming because of the opportunity and then the school district, opportunity and school district on top of each other.
You like the school district here, you research if your kids?
Here, yeah.
It was different in Colorado?
Yeah, so we had a K through 12 school with 430 kids total.
K through 12?
Yep, they just built a brand new $63 million school, K through 12.
Wow.
And you would think that with that would come high-end school administration. And in in our opinion, it did not.
I'm glad you checked it out.
It was like a brand new school?
Brand new.
Yeah.
From the ground up.
That's always the rough time.
One school?
Yeah, a brand new schools, that's always that's always a gamble. Sometimes yet there's a lot of growing pains, you know, when they first start out.
So this opportunity came. We wanted to give our kids a better opportunity. Athletics, academics, socializing, more people. We we lived in a town of 2,000 people, no stops, no stoplights, no restaurants. You'd get your food from the gas station. You'd have to go 30 minutes east or west. We were right next to Steamboat, big tourist town. So we're familiar with that when that happens here. But you got to the point where you just didn't want to go to Steamboat.
And you're planning to start being a long-term job?
Yes, sir.
You know, just don't want to have
Yeah, I've never been to this region, so I've got probably a lifetime of exploring to do.
Okay. Wish I could keep it around till for a few years.
Yeah.
You came from Alabama originally?
So that's where I spent 30 years until 2017. Just uprooted the family. In less than a month, we interviewed, my wife interviewed for a job on July 2nd. She accepted the job on July 5th. We arrived on August 17th.
And what year was that?
Seventeen.
In Colorado?
Yeah, took them five years to say, yeah, this is not it.
We loved we loved the small-town lifestyle. And then it started to change. The pandemic really changed it.
Yeah, I bet.
Yeah.
And the lack of opportunity, I would think, too, being such a small.
Yeah, we had the closest target was three and a half hours away. I'm just speaking for my wife right now.
Colorado's got a lot of pot places, too.
It does.
Josh, we're you're in good shape here.
We only had one.
You got plenty.
It's a green state. Steamboat had several. Our town finally finally agreed to putting one in on the west side of town. So we and then Craig, which was even further west. I think they had three or four.
How far are Denver, are you?
Four, four hours.
Four hours into the it way west?
East.
East into the mountains then, right?
Yeah, so you go through the mountains, you go up Eisenhower Pass, and that's up at about 11,000 feet. So you don't really want to travel that six months out of the year.
No, I was out there a couple of years ago during the wildfires up there.
Yeah.
Taking a look at it.
We had a nice summer this last summer, no fires.
Yeah.
Had a couple hundred thousand acres burned the summer before.
Yeah.
So so coming coming to Burwick is, you know, the opportunities for your family and everything. What are the opportunities you see for the recreation department?
I see the field of Memorial Park. The the potential for that park with the the money that's going to get spent there, the upgrades that are going to happen there. I see that kind of, I keep calling it the golden nugget for the town. But I see that that open green space recreationally with some upgrades to the turf to be a long-term benefit to the town, especially with the playground, the basketball, pickleball, tennis, batting cages. There's work to be done there for sure.
And beside besides the work at Memorial Park, what do you envision for, you know, other activities that the the recreation, you know, can offer? Not not just to the 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 young people, particularly in the organized sports, but other things for, you know, everybody else in town rather than just the the kids in the organized sports.
That's something that I've got to dive into. I've really been in my six days that I've been here, I've been focusing on what we do. So I haven't really had a lot of time to like change my direction to look at something new. So I'm focusing on this last couple of weeks on what's next, which would be Easter. And then what's next after that is the big animal of summer camp. And then the turf management, which is the feasibility report that I've been spending a lot of time in for the turf at the park. So I don't have
A good week-long read.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tough read, yeah. So to follow up with that, how much experience do you have with running a summer? Because we have a pretty robust summer camp here.
I that's one thing that's I've I I was a one-man show in Hayden. So I've I've done all the organizing of the youth program. So we the ages that we deal with here in this program are the same ages that I dealt with there. So registrations, I've never, we didn't have a summer camp. So I'm not going to lie to you there, we've I've never organized a summer camp. We just didn't have one.
Yeah.
So that's something that I'm jumping in feet first.
Did you go to school for this?
I went to school for sports and fitness management.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And then I
I think the good thing here is, I think there's a
Shannon's still running the summer camp, too.
Right, running the summer camp. But isn't there also like a committee that's been doing different activities for the last couple of years?
Yeah, the Rec Committee meeting last night.
Right, so you have a good support team to help you.
I do.
It won't be a one-man show.
Right, yeah, this is I've never had this kind of help. I mean, we had a Parks and Recreation Board. It was also all volunteers, but I never had a Shannon and never had people that have been in the board for us the time that some of these people on the commission have been in.
And you calling the the sports field a golden nugget? That's just music to my ears.
Mm-hmm.
It's just really good to hear that you think it's something.
Yeah, I really want that grass to grow and
Oh, yeah.
Support those kids. And and I want the grass to beat the cleats. That's my goal.
Well, we're also hoping to have, you know, expand it. You know, Tom brought it up or touched on it a little bit. It's also is it is a golden nugget, but not only for just the kids and the athletes, but we're hoping for maybe some walking paths for some of our seniors as well.
Yep.
And give them an opportunity to also use that resource.
Mm-hmm.
I can just think about that. There's so much work that's going to be done on that that field over the next couple of years, just like there's just so much going to be going on.
Yep.
And so you feel up to the challenge?
I do. I I had a six-acre open space. We had multi-purpose fields that I managed, 400-plus sprinklers, irrigation system that we pumped out of a pond. So luckily, that water wasn't charged to the town. We had water rights, which is a huge
You do you understand irrigation systems yourself?
Yes and no. I had a park supervisor who was the guy that got the finger fingers dirty.
Was it a Hunter system?
It was a
Rayburg?
We did Hunter sprinklers, sprinkler heads.
Rayburg.
Gosh, the box is gray and and purple. I can see it. I'm I'm sorry, I'm just losing it.
That's Hunter, the box, this gray box, that's a Hunter box.
Gray and purple on the box, so it was a Hunter system. It did have a remote control to it, but that was difficult because we were we'd be half a mile away when we'd have to turn it on. So we didn't have it on our phones. We were
Go over there and set the clock.
We were up in the process of upgrading a SmartRain. But that that park had too many sprinklers to be able to handle the this current system that they had.
We're not in bad shape over there for irrigation, are we?
It sounds like there was a pretty significant upgrade. I'm I actually have a call with Ian tomorrow.
Yeah.
I've got a lot of questions for him.
Yep.
Who is it?
Ian Lacy.
Yeah.
Who's he?
The guy with the turf farm, but
The Tom, Tom Irwin.
He's the one with the British accent, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's how you use a summer rain?
They'll talk to you plenty.
He was in the UK when I called him on Monday.
That's who we use for irrigation, a summer rain?
SmartRain, uh, SmartWater?
No, James, you signed the checks. What who is
I'd I'd have to get back to you on that one. I don't I don't have the top of my head. I know, sorry.
I'll come and see you.
So I got an email from you.
Really?
Yeah, on Thursday of last week.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
It said, I need to speak to you. I need you to handle something discreetly.
We get those from Tom all the time.
So I used to be the chair, so they always used to come from me for some reason. I don't send emails.
I didn't know you from Adam's house cat. So I'm sneaking around going, does he probably know a guy who knows?
That's insane. I've been getting those emails from him for six years. Where it's it's like, hey, I need your help with something. And then I the first time I got one, I was like, what do you need?
Yep.
And it's like, I need you to go and buy like $200 worth of gift cards. And and I'm like, I'm like, this does not sound like something that Tom would send to me.
So I let him read it. He's like, there's no way Noah would talk like that through email.
Nope, 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 definitely not. It's probably like, it's probably like, it's probably my email address, but with like a zero instead of an O and something, you know?
Yeah, it comes once a month.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. So, no. That is that's, no. That ain't funny.
I think it was Lisa Boggs who got one supposedly from me saying I need you to check for like $1,200 and don't tell anybody.
Yeah, that's what it is. I need you to buy a bunch of gift cards, but don't tell nobody about it.
That's exactly what it was.
Yeah, sure.
How many people do we have on the summer rec thing?
For attendance?
Yeah.
I think we were talking about it was 40.
Forty?
Forty kids.
Sixty-two.
That's it.
Sixty-two?
Sixty, 57 to 62, because I want to say that the revenue generator was about 62,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was roughly 925 to 1025 for the fees.
For sixty.
Yeah, it's about it's about a thousand dollars per kid to go through, depending.
Is that good, you think that's good?
For a whole summer. Yeah.
And not knowing the region and only being here for six, I think it's high. I think it's a high fee.
Honestly, it's it's not, it's not really. I mean, when I when I went to summer camp when I was a kid, it was like $250 a week. And that was, you know, that was a full six days, night, day. But you know, that's
Right, that's that's staying in cabins.
How old are you?
Don't try and shift you up.
Twelve and seven.
We're talking like six weeks.
A weekly camp that they're interested in.
There was a camp across the lake.
Okay. So it is what it is.
For two weeks.
That's a that's a fun age now.
Okay, so it is what
Yeah, it's that's My my only problem and my wife, well, my wife's problem as well is just like with the summer camp program is like, we, you know, we do things during the summer. We'd like to like our daughter to do like like a week of summer camp. But there really wasn't an option for that, you know? It's like it's kind of an all or nothing situation.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and I don't expect you to make major changes in this first year trying to get get your head around it and get it off its feet and everything like that, you know? But like, that's the only complaint that I have with the summer camp situation. It's like, but beyond that, there's lots of kids, they all have a great time. You know, it's a lot of stress, especially for their director.
Mm-hmm.
So you can more than welcome to contact our previous directors and talk to them about it. I'm sure they'd love to fill you in on the on the stress.
There's a lot of positivity. I mean, my I sent my granddaughter to the camp here the last couple of years. And it's phenomenal between what they do back and forth, the staff that she's hired, you know, which are, I think they're teenagers or whatnot.
College kid, a lot of
College kids, yeah. But just, you know, and being, you know, five and six, it's just they they do a good combination of things that are right there to athletic,[1498.84] they, they do a good combination of things that are right there, to athletic, to, um, you know, bringing people in for public shows, things like that. So it's pretty well-rounded. And then if your kid can't go because you're going to do a family trip that week, you know, you can work something out that, that way. But I've always heard very positive things from people who've sent their kids there, that it is a really good camp. Um, it's run well, and, um, you know, the counselors have been really excellent. So I think you're, you're coming off on something that is on solid footing.
I will try not to booger it up.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Any questions for us? What is your expectation of the board?
I, that's to be determined. I don't know. I've got a meeting with Mike. Um, probably.
Well, I got a whole bunch of stuff where you don't like.
Yeah. I think, uh, that'll be a valuable meeting to see what the expectations are and what sort of, um, support I get.
Well, we will support you as much as we possibly can.
Right.
Because, you know, that's, that's our job and that's, you know, we want to make sure that you're successful so that the town is successful. Last year, you know, we spent a lot of time doing our best to support the rec director against, I should say spurious, but you know, unnecessary criticism that she was getting at the time for doing as much as she possibly could, but for in some people's eyes, not being doing enough, you know? And, um, but yeah, like, uh, as, uh, it's one of those things where it's like, when it's running smooth, you know, we don't hear from you very much, we won't hear from us very much, you know? It's when we start having, you know, hit those road bumps that we have to start, you know, getting back together again and ironing them out, so.
The town, I think as a whole, even before Mike and I got here, as a whole, the town has always been very supportive of community recreation. So if you've got new ideas or things like that, please don't hesitate to bring it to the board. Um, because the board itself has been very supportive of the rec department here in Berwick.
Every, every meeting, we have a spot for, for, for reports of committees and departments. You're welcome to show up every two weeks and give us a report if you want to, or once a month, or once every three months.
I think you're supposed to go through James first though, right? First up. James, you got the other.
Well, I mean, he, he reports directly to James.
James is directly for it.
He needs to get on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean,
He's on the agenda and all that.
But in, in any case, you know, we, we would love to hear from you as often as you, as you like. You know, uh, and we'll, the town really does support rec as much, a lot. A lot of people are highly invested in it. Some would say too invested sometimes. But, um, yeah, uh, and, and we did a study years ago, I think it was, under, we either did it under Envision or James did it, and one of the questions was about rec. And people were very supportive of more rec. They wanted more programs. They wanted more interaction through the town, through, uh, the Recreation Department. You know, sadly, we haven't been able to do as much as we want because, you know, we didn't pay for it. See, we still gotta pay for it at the end of the day. But, um, yeah, we, we definitely want a strong rec program and, and we'll support it in every way we can.
And you talked about support is, uh, the next group following you in tonight's agenda, the Envision Berwick. I don't know if you've dealt with them directly yet or?
Dealt with them.
Yeah.
What are we talking about here? I have met them.
It is, they, they, they have been very supportive of everything the Recreation Department has done, you know? And all the time that, you know, the Envision Berwick's been going forward, that's been one of the things they've been working is tying in all those activities together so that you'll be getting a lot of support on that side too.
And I know you're upstairs with Jody, and I know Jody's very supportive of rec, you know, parks are rec that way and trying to be involved that way. And he'll be a good, good right-hand person to lean on too, so.
And if you need something facilities-wise, make sure you, make sure you let him know, and I'm sure he'll find a way to help you.
Very good.
Any other comments or questions?
Welcome aboard.
I would entertain a motion then. Because we have to actually appoint them.
Oh, I make a motion that we appoint Josh, what Josh is last name?
Jones.
Jones. I should remember that. Josh Jones, to the position of Rec Director for the Town of Berwick.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you all for the opportunity.
Our condolences.
Heard that before.
Yeah.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Welcome to Berwick.
Yes, welcome to town. All right, well, next we have the appointment of basically the entire Envision Berwick crew.
Well, not the entire, there's about fourteen of them.
I think Cyrus is going to come in and see you.
Well, uh, we have Jeremy Caston, who's that? Um, Marie Miller, Elise Weeks, and Cyrus Morgan.
They're all reappointments.
Yes. These are all re-ups.
For two years.
So, um,
Is there anything you guys want to say?
Yeah, exactly.
We, we, we've got plenty to say coming up, so I don't want to take up any time other than to say, I think I speak for all of us that, that we love, we truly love what we do and what we say to these guys. Now it feels like I'm starting the presentation. Everybody who's involved in Envision loves it. And that's an amazing thing to have a group of people who are all, you know, just, we've all met doing this, right? And we've formed friendships and bonds, but most importantly, we, we're really proud of the mountains. I mean, obviously, you guys did this before us, so it's, we're continuing in a, um, to blaze trails here. And it's cool because, like, you know, I saw how big Bring Your Lawn Chairs to Sullivan Square was. It was, it was a big to-do. And at one point, we looked around, and I think there were six of us standing together, and we went, wow, the six of us basically did this. I mean, we got a lot of funding from, you know, sponsorship, but in the end of the day, a couple people can move mountains. And that is one of the, um, one of the things that I think we all find really satisfying, if I could speak to the group. How about you? Marie? Okay?
Do we need to do an individual or can we do a block?
Yeah, and I know Cyrus isn't here, but I mean, the work that he's put into the group too. I mean, I have no problems.
No kidding.
With that, this is also.
I'll make a mo- a motion to appoint Jeremy Caston, Marie Miller, Elise Weeks, and Cyrus Morgan to two-year terms to Envision Berwick Committee.
I'll second it. Any further discussion?
I just want to make a comment as, you know, is, it's funny because Nicole Fecto put a post out this morning about nine years ago, we were sitting around talking about what to do, and here we are. And it is amazing. As, you know, as, I remember those nine years ago and, you know, everybody was saying, everybody else was saying about that group is, oh, it's just another one of those groups that's going to come and go. But, um, is that initial group, they got things going, you know, I have to credit Frank Underwood and Pat and Paul Bovier, you know, Jessica and,
Yeah, Jessica.
Serena, you know, is those type of people that were there in the beginning. Um, but the thing I've seen with the Envision Berwick and being involved off and on peripherally over these years is that there's always somebody new willing to step forward.
I think that's really good.
And take it on. And the thing that impressed me, the thing, the thing that has really impressed me is, you know, it's been a younger generation that I'm used to, and most of them are people that chose to move to Berwick for a reason. They weren't born here, they didn't come here because, you know, something required. They came here because they wanted to come here. And that's the thing I see with the Envision Berwick is that they, they want to make the town that much better. And, you know, I, I have no problem supporting everything you guys have been doing.
And preserve the reasons that we loved it to begin with, right? You know, make it better, but not come in and change everything. There's a reason that you, you don't pick Berwick, Maine because you wish you lived in Reno.
Or hate in Colorado, we just.
You know, and, um, just, just to second that or piggyback on that, and I know I've been bad at popping in meetings lately. But every time I popped into an Envision Berwick meeting or seen you guys out on, on the ground, it's that passion and that energy. And it's every idea, it's like, it's exciting or new, and no matter how tired you guys are getting from working through it to get some lawn chairs Sullivan Square off and, and, you know, seeing the volunteer work, we, we know that it's got to be physically and mentally, and you guys never show it. There's always that passion, that energy that's there that just brings the town together. And it's a huge, huge blessing to see from, from this end of it or from being in town or seeing my kids go through it. And really thank you to all you guys and what you do all the time, so.
More to come.
And I, and I promise I'll get back in the meeting soon.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? All right, that's four reappointments. Now, Berwick's brand rollout progress report from Envision Berwick.
So who's speaking?
Oh, those Envision Berwick people again, geez.
Supplementary to that, I just want, your, your enthusiasm is always so refreshing.
Oh, thank you.
You've always, you're always enthusiastic about the work that you're doing, and it's, uh, it's, it is just amazing.
Well, it's not my day job. I'm not always enthusiastic about my day job. I try to be, but, yeah. Hi.
Hi.
Am I on this side? Hi, guys. So we have a, um, we've been working toward,
Hold on, I gotta join.
Yeah, oh, join.
I don't want to join through your audio, right?
I don't think so.
No, no audio, no mic.
That's what she just said. Correct, yes.
Otherwise it gets sound really strange.
Oh, that weird echo. Oh, she might even get the feedback.
Yeah, she'd be able to share her screen.
Could just have Marie do it.
Sorry, guys.
No problem.
When do I get business cards?
I'm sure you can ask Patty.
I'm joking. I have business cards.
I haven't got that. I don't need, I don't need different ones.
I've had, I've had business cards for like thirteen years at this point. I first made my own, I was just like, you know, sales associate, but whatever, you know, so.
Hope you want to intro yourself.
Do we start with the intro? Okay, so, while, while Elise is dialing us in, I will start by introing myself, which I feel like I've done for all of you at one point or another. But just to set the table again, as you said, Tom, I'm not from Berwick and very much intentionally moved here with my family almost seven years ago. I left a life in Los Angeles where I worked in entertainment and made TV and movies and sat in my car for three hours every day. I paid other people to pick my kids up and take them to daycare and, and I was miserable. And I wanted to farm. I wanted to homestead at least and raise food for my family and, um, raise children who aren't stuck on tablets and climb trees and walk in chicken shit, pardon me, chicken poo. And, and I, so that's, we, we moved to Maine to, uh, learn to homestead in, uh, in, in, uh, Harp Small, Maine, where we lived for a year, uh, and learned to split wood and kill chickens and all this stuff. And fell in love with our farm in Berwick and fell in love with Berwick, came back for nine months and wooed Nancy Fulton into selling me that farm, which is where I live with my family. And, um, and we are slowly renovating that almost two-hundred-year-old property. So it's, it's a big lift. I'm now working back in TV, um, because of the pandemic. My background in Los Angeles was very focused on marketing for movies, so I marketed big studio movies while I made my passion projects. All of this to set the table to say, when I came to, to Envision Berwick to, uh, initially to set up Bring Your Lawn Chairs to Sullivan Square, when it didn't have a name, and it was an idea that Ruth Blue had, I knew that I could bring my energy and my enthusiasm, but also a certain amount of, um, expertise to Envision Berwick in addition to what else had already been happening. So Elise and I became friends through Envision Berwick, and now I'll let her give her intro.
Hi everyone, I think I've met pretty much all of you, but just in case not, I'm Elise Weeks. I live here in Berwick. Um, I run a graphic design shop called Pixels and Pulp, which I've owned since two, I started, I co-founded that with my business partner in 2008, but I've been doing graphic design for about twenty years. And like we've been talking about, I, I'm not from here, but I chose Berwick when we bought our house here in 2011. Um, and we love it here. We wanted to put down roots here because of the schools, because of the land, um, because of what's going on here, the kind of distance we've got. We're near the mountains, we're near the ocean, we can get to cities pretty quickly. So we just, when I was shopping for my home, I, when we found the house that we were going to live in, it's on this amazing, we're kind of butted up against a seventy-five acre piece of land, and we have this crazy view. And it was not something I thought would be possible. So it was amazing to first come to Berwick and realize that like, my first home purchase ever was in this amazing place. And since becoming involved with Envision Berwick, it's just, yeah, I've made incredible friends and we've since had a daughter. And we've just really enjoyed our time here, and it's been amazing. So, um, yeah, but for my professional life as a graphic designer, um, we kind of do all different aspects of branding. We do branding, we do website design, print, a little packaging, uh, we do print design, things like that. Um, we have clients locally, we've done work for Mr. Fox, um, UNH, we have kind of higher ed clients. We work with nonprofits, we work with organizations that kind of do, um, social justice, environmental, um, things like that. So we're really just kind of passionate about working with organizations and, um, nonprofits, towns that are kind of just working to make the world a better place. So, um, yeah, that's kind of why we're here. We, we love Berwick, obviously. But we really wanted to kind of come in here and, um, actually it was Serena who was really sort of like the catalyst for, for bringing me in. Um, I think she kind of, we met previously through, you know, I think I did a talk in Summersworth about branding, actually. And, um, I think she, over the course of meeting us and seeing our skills, thought we could kind of come and bring those to apply to Berwick and help improve the town here. Um, specifically originally was for our community engagement project, but also, you know, maybe helping with the branding, economic development, all of that kind of stuff. So just to do like a quick recap, and I apologize, I'm using my paper notes here just because the way we've got this set up. So I'll be referencing those a little bit. We do have a lot to cover tonight. We'll try and get us out of here as quickly as possible. But, um, just to do a quick recap of what is branding. So a lot of times people sort of think, oh, it's our logo, but it's, it's a lot more than that. It's sort of like the way, um, we're perceived by the people who experience it, whether it's a product, whether it's a company, an individual, a town. Um, so there's a lot of different sort of expressions of that brand, the logo being one of them. It's our, you know, the tie faces we use, the colors we use, our signage, our town website, the graphics on our town vehicles. It's how we talk about ourselves, it's the experiences we have. So our summer concerts, that's a piece of our brand. It's, you know, when people come to town hall and they engage with folks, that's all part of our brand.
I also want to say something about that. I think the term brand has like, it's got a, it sounds so like, it's weird to talk about our town that's like, you know, charming, like that's the whole thing about Berwick, right? That's what, that's why we moved here. To talk about it in this way is that where you'd say a brand, it sounds kind of gross. But actually, what's important, and this is why I said, preserving what we love about it, what's important for Envision Berwick and for us in, in talking about Berwick and talking about it in these terms is to retain, right? It's not to change, it's not to come in and like, say, this is, we're going to change everything. It's to be like, here's what's great. So if you look at the signs, just, I know this is slightly tangential, but if you look at the signs and the way they look, they, the new signs, right? The new with the Berwick and Maine, and it looks like a postcard or whatever. The function of it is to be like, this is, this is, you have a sense of place, it feels authentic, and it's, and it, and it isn't like, it doesn't look like a sign for Reno, right? It looks like a sign for Berwick. That's what good branding is. So I just wanted to like,
Yeah, that's, that's a good segue, just because, I mean, that's, we're very passionate about this stuff. We feel that this is very important. Having a cohesive system is important because it just sort of elevates the perception of our town and the experiences that people have here, and that it shows that we care. So we want it to be a reflection of who we are and who we aspire to be. Berwick is in an incredible moment right now with everything that's happening at the edge. Like, we just have this like downtown that's sort of like, it's starting to come up and it's already starting to happen. I think we're putting, you know, really good people in place to make stuff happen, but like you were saying, we all are here for a reason. We don't want to just come in guns blazing and change everything about it. We want to preserve, we live in a rural community. We love that about it. We don't want it to feel like our light, you know, the sign is like this blinking crazy thing. We have a message board basically on our sign where we go down and we change out the messaging on it, and it just feels really charming and special.
Authentic.
Right. And ultimately, we want this to be a place that people feel pride in and encourage new people to move here, encourage businesses to come here. When they come over the bridge and they see our sign, they think, oh, wow, that's really special. And, you know, from every touch point that they have with our brand, that comes through. So tonight, really what this is, is just to kind of give a recap of, we've done a lot. We kind of came on board around 2019, um, to start this process. So this is really like a where we've started, where we are now, and where we're going from here. So, um, this slide right here is basically just to kind of give us a little bit of, um, a little background of where we came from. So, and also to acknowledge like, all of this, you know, just kind of the hours and the time and the love that went into all of this. They all have their unique places. But when you look at all this, so in 2019, this was our website on the left. There's some pictures of our, you know, the signs we used to have. And then a kind of a bunch of different logos that are used for the town. And I should say that Berwick didn't really have a logo. So we kind of had a type treatment on our website. We had, you know, a little bit of different treatments on our signage, and then we had our town seal. So we didn't really have a brand at all, um, and each kind of department within the town kind of feels like its own thing. There's not like a unifying theme, kind of connecting everything together. So the first phase of the website, we started with the logo. That was the logical place to start. So this is what we came up with in 2019. So we started with our logo, and then we also have, um, our town emblem, which is on the right that has our town motto on there, where tradition meets tomorrow. And we preserved our town seal, but we did, um, update the typeface on there to match our new system's, um, font.
It looks, it looks cleaner, I think.
Yeah, yeah. A little more readable.
Goes with the other one because it's got the same.
Yeah, I think the original logo, I mean, it's, it's sort of like a picture and then, you know, photocopied a few times. So like, it's the integrity of it kind of, you know,
After fifty years of, You got gussied up on it, okay?
No longer a circle.
So the first few years was really, you know, starting our stationary with the business cards, um, kind of updating, doing a little bit of a reskin of our website with our town colors. Our few, first few signs. I don't have great pictures of the signs on Route Nine and Two Thirty-Six, but we did those as well.
It's because nobody wants to stop and take those pictures and risk their life.
Right. Yeah, Two Thirty-Six, um, so we did some merch. We did, you know, t-shirts, onesies, hoodies, some stickers. Um, all this was launched, um, the logo was at the, the first lawn chairs that we had in 2019. Um, another big part of this, which shout out to Marie, um, major overhaul of our social media presence. So she and I kind of got together. Um, she's a phenomenal photographer and is really great. So we adopted a, it's called, an app called Canva, which many of you have probably already heard of. But basically, it's sort of a design app that's a web-based tool. And so we got in there, um, I developed a bunch of templates that you can see, so for like the car show. For rec, we have the, um, the litter cleanup, for voting, for our business profiles, um,
Farm Animal Friday.
Farm Animal Friday, Open Farm Day, historical posts. So basically, the effort here was just to kind of like, again, when you go to our Instagram or our Facebook and you go through the feed, the quality of the photos is really much improved. But also, we wanted to develop a system of templates so that if you saw a particular post that had type on it, like for the farmer's market or whatever, it all feels like Berwick, consistent use of color, consistent use of tax. Again, it's just kind of all carrying the same theme through everything that we're doing. Um, so the next phase, sort of like 2021, 2022, we really start to build momentum. And just a shout out to Jeremy, because I feel like you've had a lot of incredible ideas and have been able to sort of connect people together to kind of make a lot of this stuff happen. This is one of them. Um, so communication is definitely a thing in town that we are, it's a work in progress. One of the things that we heard when, you know, there were community surveys done in like 2013, I think. But this is a thread that I think we're all very familiar with. So something we experimented with was doing a print publication called the Berwick Quarterly, which was essentially like, uh, which was essentially like, uh, a big town calendar. Um, that also, it was sort of somewhere between like a magazine and a newsletter kind of ish, sort of. Um, and then the, the town calendar, but this, you know, incorporated like, not just what's happening in the town, but also sort of special features that are very uniquely Berwick. And please jump in on this.
Well, so I, I want to say that, because the social media also promoted, you know, was letting people know about stuff that was happening with rec or letting people. But not everybody is on social media and we heard that a lot. We do have a, a, an older population here that doesn't use the internet. And so, uh, uh, an attempt to solve that was this every door direct mail piece that four times a year could come into people's mailboxes. And it came with its own complications, but, but I do think that it, that it further, like if a business wanted to move to the edge and was looking at, at, you know, doing a giant build out, being able to say, look, here's Berwick and have these pieces that we hand out that, that tie into the look of the website and tie into the business cards and, and it's all feels like it's part of a, a system. I think that even though it wasn't affordable to continue to do it, it still is great to have those because they're, they, they fit in with something that elevates the town in the right direction.
Would it be more affordable to do it like twice a year?
I don't know. I mean, I think that's just another conversation because Tom, at the, the screening at the library, you know, was like, what can we do to keep this going? I think that it's a great conversation and I, we spend more time out of our week than I probably spend looking for my next gig, talking about this. It's really important to us to, because it's important to the town, it's important to people. But, but yeah, let's, let's have a further conversation about that because it's a good question.
Um, also last year, we kind of, uh, developed a few more merch products. We did some new t-shirts, some new knit hats, caps, an enamel mug, which was really exciting, um, some new stickers. And one of the major improvements was that we were able to move this entire inventory into an online store using a square point of sale system. So that was huge. Um, and just shout out to our finance department and our town clerks for helping us make that happen because, um, we still have volunteers that help kind of come to town hall and fulfill the inventory so people can pick them up. But this made it possible for us to not only track our orders. Um, we have this really crazy system at the first lawn chairs where we were like analog clipboard checking off inventory. I was like doing math in my head while people were standing there waiting for change. It was very inefficient, but now with this, we can actually, um, have a booth at the farmer's market. So we've done that a couple of times and, um, at our concerts, we can just kind of, people can come up, use their cards or they can order online and then we just fulfill them. So that was a really nice.
Are we shipping?
We don't ship, so we, we have a system now where it's sort of a weekly fulfillment, um, schedule where we kind of alternate volunteers that will come, kind of go through the whole, you know, all the orders for the week, package them up, and then we leave them with the town clerks and then people can just come in and pick them up.
Yeah, that's good.
It's great.
I want to mention too that we sold over five thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two of merch.
Yeah.
And in terms of shout outs, we should give a shout out to Devon Dukes. Who partners with us on all that apparel and they actually do all the runs. And then we, we, you know, they, they have been very generous in working with us on this merch.
Yeah, that's been awesome. Um, so just a couple other quick, um, updates from last year. We kept building on the stationary system, so now all the town letterhead matched with the business cards. And, you know, there's three different variations of this depending on the type of correspondence. So there's sort of just like general correspondence and then we've got sort of the more official and then the one from the town manager's office. Um, just a couple little like sub projects that happened. So last year, um, some of our big events, Open Farm Day. This, while it's not like, you know, all of the Berwick branding, it's very much in keeping, um, with the Berwick brand. So it feels like us, um, kind of using some of the typography, some of our colors, um, and then lawn chairs, same kind of thing. It's got very much its own look and feel, but just like the, the larger system that we're developing for the town, this one kind of has its own as well. So every kind of thing that you, um, kind of interact with, with this event, whether it's the stage, social media, the poll banners, the shirts, everything is its own system. So that's kind of what we've been up to. So over the past year, now we're kind of backing up a little bit and we're thinking about, okay, what's the next step in this process? So to do that, the first piece of this was kind of getting into the weeds on developing, you know, just for our understanding of knowing the, the full hierarchy of how the town is structured, all the entities that fall within that, the departments, kind of all the levels within that. So we kind of just, we worked with James to kind of come up with this. Um, so we can look ahead and kind of see where we need to go from here, just to really get organized and, and have a full understanding of all of those pieces. So the earlier slide that we showed of all the different things, the website, the signage and all the different kind of logos where there wasn't quite, you know, a unified system here. Our goal is to kind of move towards something like this. Just gonna caveat this with, this is not a finished set yet. Some other things at the bottom here are a little more conceptual, but starting from the top.
Totally conceptual. These are not like ready to go on people's t-shirts. This is like a pitch document that's saying that there will be a time where there are.
Yes, lots of conversations still have to happen, but basically I wanted to kind of visualize just so we can kind of wrap our minds around what the goal would be. So at the top, those are our official marks. We have an adopted, our emblem and our logo. And then beneath that for rec department, public works and kind of entities that fall under that, these would all incorporate, you know, kind of a variation of our town emblem, so they kind of all go with the system.
I don't know, can you guys read them from there, the ones on secondary? Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, and we'll, we can share this PDF around two afterwards too, if that will be helpful. But eventually the goal is to kind of, you know, we're all part of the same team here, Team Berwick. So basically when we have, we love to talk with the police department and the fire department and the library and sort of envision Berwick, special committees, special projects, things that kind of warrant their own brand, sub-brand, but have it feel like it's all part of this cohesive. I feel like I sound like a broken record, but I am because it's very important. Um, having that consistency, having that kind of unifying system. Um, so that, you know, it has that sort of brand recognition, it has that familiarity. This is actually already in progress. So the Department of Parks and Recreation, they've already adopted their emblem. This is already on their social channels. Um, over here on the right, so we, we talked about earlier, we do offer some, a lot of times we share what people are already doing. So Marie, you know, she's doing her social updates, she'll kind of share things and stories on Instagram, but there are sort of key things that we help actually develop the artwork for, um, as they warrant them. So the Easter egg hunt's a big event that rec does, the townwide litter cleanup. So we kind of helped develop the graphics for that. The camp t-shirts, the staff shirts, so those all kind of incorporate, um, the town branding. So this is kind of already up and running, will continue to support rec. Um, looking forward to meeting with Josh and kind of going over this stuff with him. So he's kind of on board with, with what's happening already. Um, and then the same with, basically right now, we're working with Public Works in the same capacity. So, um, we actually just delivered the jackets for the, for the folks at the, uh, transfer station. So they've got nice new heavy carhartt jackets for the winter that now have our official town emblem on it. Um, and then we're gonna update all of, there's a couple of new trucks. So this was a really good time to kind of work all of the, the town artwork onto the new trucks and then just make sure that those all follow suit as well. So these are just kind of visuals because there's a lot going on, there's a lot of projects. So this is just sort of a quick little breakdown to show like, um, what's already been done. And I just want to note that the text is a little small here to see, but this is all calendar year, it's not Berwick's fiscal year. So this is kind of like what has been accomplished during calendar years. Um, so this past year, Public Works. And then moving forward in this calendar year, it will likely be Envision Berwick or potentially Berwick for a Lifetime, which is another subcommittee. We're meeting with Sharon Kelly from the library, who's been amazing getting that subcommittee back up and running again. She's been doing wonderful things with that. So likely we'll be working with her on that, eventually the library and safety and police. So, you know, we want to be really thoughtful about how we time all of this because we are working within specific budgets. We want to be really intentional about what we tackle each year so that we're staying on budget and prioritizing things at some big sense. Um, for example, this year, um, or two thousand twenty-two, we had planned to do the Envision Berwick logo, but because of the truck purchase for Public Works, it made sense to sort of pivot and focus on that and just kind of put that first on the, on the punch list. And same thing with signage, there's a bunch more signs we can do here in town. Um, that we're working on the kayak launch right now, the sign for the transfer station that will be similar to what's downtown, it's such a high traffic area. So we want to do something where, again, we can kind of have like messaging to let people know what's going on. Soccer signups or, you know, farmer's market or whatever the kind of thing pertinent, you know, timely thing is going on.
Vent of the week.
Exactly, exactly.
Or when the dump is gonna be closed.
Right, right. Or bring your paint for.
Yeah.
Dangerous chemical day.
Totally. Yeah, so this will follow a, a plan as well over the next, you know, number of years. So this is what the printout is in front of you. I apologize, this is insane to look at on screen. But really this is just to show kind of a comprehensive view. Everything that's in green has already been done. Things that have a little orange dot next to it, that's in progress right now. We've got a lot on deck for this year and then again, we just want to kind of, um, map out what we're doing for the next few fiscal years. And so that meeting is happening in two weeks, we are already working through all of that. Um, this is not set in stone, we kind of do our best to map all this out based on the budgets that we, um, we will pitch a budget that we think that we need for the projects that we have. You know, we can kind of work through all of that, but this gives us sort of a good framework so that we're not just kind of willy-nilly doing whatever. Like we want to break this down by all of the projects that we think, you know, that need to be done. And then we focus on the ones that, that, um.
Also with intention to the timeline and like, for example, the wave finding sign. In fact, we're obviously gonna do a new town hall sign with a wave finding, you know, um, kayak launch, you know, point two miles this way and library, point six miles that way or whatever that, you know. But there's no point in doing that, as we've discussed, until we get some of this dig a hole once stuff taken care of here because the traffic patterns and things are gonna change. So we're holding off on that, that's on the list, but it just doesn't make sense until we come up under that with all the work that's happening around here.
Yeah, this table has changed like three times in the past week, just because of conversations that we've had and things that we've been having to move around, um, as we learn about things like that. So, um, that's all very exciting. Um, we've done a lot, but like anything, there are some challenges. It hasn't always been super smooth sailing. Um, you know, nothing super crazy major, but, you know, communication is definitely, can be a bit of a pain point sometimes. Um, you know, like you were saying, not everyone in town's on social media. Sometimes even when things aren't readily available, there's not always the initiative to go find it. Um, sometimes it feels like things are a bit siloed, you know, there's limited resources. You know, a lot of, um, you know, financial resources, human resources. People are kind of volunteering part-time to do this outside of their actual jobs. Um, you know, but we, again, we try to, we feel really proud of all of the work that we've been able to do, given some of the constraints that we have. Um, and this is new, like we're, we know that it's hard to do new things. Um, but we want to help, we are really passionate about this stuff. We, because we wouldn't be here if we didn't think this was important. And we probably annoy people sometimes with how much we are like driving these points home, but we want to be supportive as well because it is new and not, we don't understand, we don't think everyone, you know, has to understand how all of this stuff works out of the gate. So as we're developing new things, we want to help develop new processes. So if someone does need to order a new sweatshirt or someone does need a new truck vehicle, here's who you need to communicate with, here's how we need to do that. So we're working on establishing those, um, protocols so that it makes it really clear and easy. So you guys can just stay focused on your own jobs and not have to worry about this, this stuff. And what, what logo, where's the logo file? Like, don't even worry about that. Like we will help you figure all of that out. Um, and, you know, just want to kind of acknowledge like, the successes, the good stuff. So, um, after we sadly had to kind of pause on the Berwick Quarterly, we did send out a survey, survey, albeit it wasn't like a huge pool of survey results. Um, there were probably about twenty-four respondents to that. But of the people that responded overwhelmingly, it felt like we're, you know, felt very valuable, that people felt more informed about what was happening. Um, like Jeremy was saying, we made over fifty-five hundred dollars in sales from our merch. Um, the Instagram following has more than doubled, uh, since Marie took that over. Um, we know that the business spotlights and the Berwick stories that Jeremy produced, um, the incredible like video spots from, was it Hagmat Tech and Humblebee and Corner Point? Yeah, some of our local businesses and farms, um, they're just really helping to build awareness. And people are starting to notice, we now get asked, um, businesses reach out on the regular to the Envision Berwick email requesting to be featured because they, they're seeing the impact that it's having.
I agree.
And other towns are noticing what we're doing, um, which is really kind of cool. So we got approached by, I think, both Summersworth and the Town of the Armeth to do requests for proposals to do branding in their towns. We do not have the capacity to do that, but it was just kind of validating to see that like, oh, okay. Like people are noticing improvements that are happening here in Berwick.
Yeah, don't leave us.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, are you saying that your businesses have the capacity to take on another town's branding?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, well, our hearts are in Berwick too, so. Uh, yeah, so this is just a quick screenshot of some of the, after we launched the Berwick Quarterly, we got, you know, some, there's a lot of negativity on Facebook, I think we all can realize that. But this was some refreshing, positive stuff. And this one in the middle was just really stuck out for me because it just says, um, we ask to be informed and someone listened. So it's just kind of that reassurance that, you know, communication's a thing, people want to know what's going on. We did a thing.
And they appreciated it.
Yeah.
Yes.
You think there's a lot of negativity on Facebook?
I mean.
Why is that?
I was having a discussion with somebody today, it's just like.
What, why is that?
It's just all negative.
I'm asking them, what, 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 why is that? Do you have an opinion on why that is?
Why, why people are negative on Facebook? You're asking, I think it's, I mean, I think it's the same reason that you probably all, I would imagine, think. I think that it takes a lot more nerve to get up and say something here in a forum where you look people in the eye or even over Zoom than it does to write a nasty comment.
It's very cowardly to write something on Facebook.
I mean, it could be any number of things, but it's, you know.
You're part of the problem.
It also doesn't take any effort, right? It's very easy to just criticize.
It's too bad.
That's why.
More intelligence for many of them.
The world is full of critics and very few people will make things.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's why we push through because I think that the work that's happening is worth doing and we feel that it's important and we love it. And I think overwhelmingly the response that we have heard has been way more positive than negative. Um, lawn chairs in particular was amazing. Just everybody that came up to our booth was just so psyched and just the vibe there was, it was magical. Um, I feel really lucky to have been part of that.
Could I just say, as we get into next steps, to be really clear, this is not just, we think it would be nice if the town's colors were this and we want to change everybody's shirts and jackets. And there is a very clear line from doing this work to bringing in money. And just to look you in the eye and say, in my heart of hearts and in Elise's heart of hearts, we truly believe that for Berwick to get the tax base successfully, that it needs, that, that the Edge needs, that, that Alex needs in his place across the street, that, that, you know, that, that is the future. Doing it with intention is going to affect the outcome so much more than just kind of going, well, we hope this works out okay. And some of this sounds kind of lofty, talking about brand and colors and it's really important that people use the right logo and don't change the font. But it's real, it's a real thing. It will deeply affect the perception of somebody who is considering opening a business here or moving here or just for our own personal pleasure of using a website that, that runs perfectly and has a search bar and, you know, all of these things are part of that.
Yeah, to just make nice things look nice for the sake of doing that is pointless. We would not be doing that if there wasn't a strategy behind it. It's just, you really, it, it really matters to make sure that there is a goal in place and to do all of this for that bigger goal. Um, yeah, so, so we're gonna keep going. Um, so we're gonna be presenting the budget later this month and prioritizing in that two thousand twenty-three list and that massive crazy table, um, what we're gonna do next. And, um, we want to kind of encourage there to be a community communication liaison to also help us keep effectively sharing information on a regular basis. Sort of the next iteration of what the BQ, the Berwick Quarterly was and whatever the next. and whatever the next kind of phase of that is to be really effective. And again, just helping to kind of develop the process for making sure that we really preserve the integrity of our brand and reduce confusion across departments and entities. Yeah.
Yeah, keep the good vibes going so that there's full buy-in and everybody feels good about it, you know? It's not always easy, but it's, it's important.
We want people to feel proud and, you know, like a sports team, or like a, yeah, anything that kind of has that really cohesive feel. We want that for Berwick too, so, thank you very much.
I know that was, there's a lot, but thanks, guys.
No, thank you.
It's important.
Thank you very much.
No, as I said earlier, is, you know, the, the work that Envision Berwick Group has done over the last nine or 10 years has been amazing. And as I said, it just seems like, you know, as some of us, you know, move on and, and start going, is, is always seems to be more people to step forward, and it really encourages me.
Yeah. And I think the, uh, in my honest opinion is, when you first showed up with branding three years ago, or whatever it was, you know, it felt to me like, this would be cute, this would be fun. You know, we're gonna get a new logo for the town, but, you know, it's a town thing. It's not really gonna go much further than that, you know? And at, at every step, it's just grown and become better and more stabilized, and it looks, it looks great. You know, so it's, it's definitely proved, you know, my inner monologue wrong, just like, cause like, I mean, like, I thought it looked great when it first came out, but I just, you know, I wasn't sure that it was gonna make that much of a difference. But when you do see it on signs and on vehicles and on shirts, and it, and it's, 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 it is more unified, you know, it, not only does it look better, it gives, it, it does give a bigger sense of pride that it's a unified force, you know, and it's, it's, it's great. I re, I, I enjoy it, and I think it's really helping out the town, and you guys have put a lot of effort into it, which, you know, it, it's surprising to say. You'd think, once you make the logo once, you don't have to do anything after that. But you guys really have put the effort into it as well to make it more known, to make it, to put it out there. And it, I think it's yielding results, so.
No, and, you know, something that Jeremy said, I, I think holds true is, you know, Sarah and I moved up Berwick to raise a family at the same time Elise did. So, you know, kind of what was there, the, the school district and looking at it. But I remember two years ago, sitting here with, with Linda and Rob and talking about, what, what are we gonna do to the Edge, and what are we gonna do to, to bring in business? And, you know, as you talk about the brand of the town and you look at the signage, and it's become more than just families looking at a nice town that's, that's close to the city that's gonna be there, but then it's that tax revenue, that tax base. And now it's showing something that there is a community now, businesses can see that, hey, this is what's really there, and this is a community that I might be successful moving into versus staying over the bridge in, in New Hampshire. And, and I, I think that's a piece that, well, is it the forefront or not? It's gonna be an underlying benefit that's going to become forward that I think we're gonna see, you know, really a, a bigger benefit four, five, six years from now for what you guys have been doing the last four, five, six years and, and, and going forward. So I, I think those, like you said, do it with intent, and, and you guys surely have, and, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's, it's, we're building a foundation right now. It takes a long time, and it's, it's not gonna happen overnight. There's definitely, you know, it, it can feel like a slog sometimes, but we, if we do it intentionally, we keep saying that word, but it, it's true. Like, if we just kind of really work toward having that a, a system that really feels fully developed, because, yeah, you can just make a logo and yay, and then it's out there. But then you end up kind of like, with everybody's doing that, it's, you know, if you were to, the sports team analogy, if every player on a team had a different color and a different logo and a different thing, it's like, it wouldn't feel like a team. So I feel like having something that really pulls us all together and every kind of touch point you have, whether you walk into the town hall, or you come over the bridge, or you get a business card, or you go to the website, or you see a snowplow go by, or whatever, it's like, it just starts to permeate your brain, and you just start, it just becomes part of our town's DNA, so that's, that's the goal.
Now, how do I get a Berwick hat for free? What do I do?
I'll say, tight one.
Geez, who's got your check?
All right, um, anything else?
That's it. We just, just wanted to fill you in on what we've been up to and where we're going.
Good job.
Yeah. We're looking forward to hearing from you in the next month or so for budget stuff.
Absolutely.
Give that to them all.
And hanging out with us for the next two years.
There's a GoFundMe page.
I'm Canadian, that's not helpful at all. All right, then moving along.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Marie.
No unfinished business, town manager report.
We've got a 97
Yeah, we gotta send out our appointments.
97 Freightliner from the fire department, that's up for bid right now. $20,000 minimum bid. Submission deadline is January 23rd at 4:00 PM. For more information, you go to the town website under Business, RFP slash bid request.
What kind of fire truck is it? Tank?
It's a, I think it has a cab, and I don't think it's an actual
I don't think it's a tanker.
The details are online.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just throwing out there, gaining interest in the board going back to meeting on the first and third Tuesdays of the month.
Yep.
Um, while back, we switched to second and fourth. First and third can work better for the, for the critical dates and wouldn't have to move the meetings for when elections come around consistently. So it's something that we could look at doing for July, just the start of a fiscal year and just go back to the, concern on the, the third.
Right now, it's the second and fourth, right?
Second and fourth.
When was it last first and third?
Is, we changed it, um,
Couple of years ago.
Well, several years ago is, is when Ed Gignier was re-elected.
Yeah, before us.
When Ed Gignier was re-elected to the board, and he was attending the Legion meetings at the time. And we decided, the Legion wasn't gonna change their, their day, so we just decided arbitrarily that we'd switch it over to the, the second and fourth. So there's nothing there that says one way or the other. It doesn't matter to me one way or the other, so.
So Patty, does it make, so is it more logistical sense for, from your end and, and from?
Yeah, elections are typically second Tuesday of months, so it falls on a board night. It also makes sense for warrant signings for finance.
Okay, yeah, I mean, yeah.
I'm good with that, yeah.
I'm good with moving that.
Because we have several reports due monthly, and we can't get the checks until you guys sign the warrant.
You can always cancel it.
We're already way behind.
You can always cancel a select list meeting if it interferes with anything you have.
Yeah, listen to him.
No, no, she, she says she needs us to be.
I need it before.
I'm just kidding. Yeah. Um, What, what is, is there any, beyond it being the fiscal year, is there any other reason to, to put it to July?
They're just starting a natural, there's, we won't, we won't
You gotta announce it, I was just gonna say that is, you gotta give some notice too as well.
Yeah.
You know, for the, for the crowds that are coming.
We have an election in June though, right? Um, okay, then what I would like to do is I'd like to make a motion that the board change its meeting dates from the second and, uh, fourth Tuesday of every month to the first and third Tuesday of every month, starting on, uh, June 1st.
Yeah, because this way it won't interfere with that election. I can second that.
So, uh, motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, so starting in June, we will meet on the first and third Tuesday of every month.
All right, budgets are coming. I'm gonna propose we meet, uh, regularly scheduled meeting for the 14th, schedule a special meeting for the 21st, and then we have a regular scheduled meeting for the February 28th. And then pencil in, um, March 8th if we need it.
Okay, so go back to that, you just said the 28th of January?
No, no, February.
February?
Starting February.
February, yep.
February 21st as an extra meeting.
February 14th, special meeting the 21st, regular meeting 28th, and then pencil in March 8th.
If needed.
If we need it.
And March 8th would be the first Tuesday.
Hopefully we don't need it, but just in case.
Okay. And then 3:15 would be our regular.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh, I got a one for you. We have an issue with our Trio software with the police contracts going to 2.5% for the main PERS, and us having other employees that are the 5%, Trio can't handle that. Also, we're gonna bring forward this change anyways. I'll throw it up for tonight, just for consideration. I have the language in front of me too here. But maybe it's something we can put on for the next board meeting as a amendment to the personnel policy. Again, there's a, there's a issue with retiree hires in, in Trio, not being able to do the different deductions for the employee or employer for main PERS.
Have you contacted Trio to see if they can help with that? Cause I know other, other communities have, have to institute that.
Yeah, we have been in, I, I, I can check back in with Lisa. I, I had the same question, and she said that there's an issue with, with it.
Do we cut the payroll checks here? Employee checks, do they come out of here, or do we have a payroll company do it?
Come out of here.
Okay.
Yeah, they do come here, yeah.
So I have, um, the amendment, actually, this is what it would look like.
So what are you asking for?
To change the personnel policy to match what we're doing for the police. And I'm not asking for any action tonight, just, uh, bringing it forward and something we can put on the agenda for next meeting, if that's something in direction we want to add in.
So how, I guess I'm all confused, you're saying that Trio can't implement this, but yet you want to change the policy?
Just because we have two, we have, we have, um, one where it'd be two and a half percent, where the town pays two and a half percent, and the employee pays the other two and a half percent. And then we have another retiree hire, the code within Trio, that is, the employee pays the 5%.
But why put the extra two and a half percent on the town?
So the changing the personnel policy would bring it all into two and a half percent for the retiree hires.
So you're not looking to change the Trio system? You're looking to change the amount of percentage that the town pays for rehire?
Yep, retiree hires, yep. And I can actually have what that means financially for the next meeting, just sort of looking at, just like
I wanna see, yeah.
We just like we did for the
I wanna see the numbers you provided.
Just like we had for the police contract, that, you know, who, what it means financially.
So be, so right now, it stands that the employee pays the 5%. And you want to sit, you want to split that, that the employee pays two and a half, and the town pays two and a half?
Yep.
And you have a, a financial analysis breakdown of how much that's gonna cost us?
I can do that. For, for a year, I mean, yeah.
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 But this only affects those who have retired and have been rehired.
Right, exactly, yep.
This is not for all employees.
Just retiree hires.
It's mostly the whole police department, isn't it?
Half of them.
Half of them.
Right, and that's already, and that's already, that change has already happened for the officers in the police contract.
So what does the contract say?
Two and, it's the
Two and a half, it's not the five?
Yeah, two and a half percent.
Okay. But the rest of, the rest of the town is still at five, and this is gonna change everybody to be uniform.
And other than the police department, we don't have any other rehired, retiree hires anyway.
Just, just police.
So it's just right now is the police.
And there might be some fire that are coming up to be eligible. Last thing I have, um, the town submitted CDS funding, which is also known as the earmark for the downtown work. There's a 3.142 million dollar funding package we've already been awarded. We just had to kind of apply to it, to create access to it, so we're just trying to get, get that money. Sabago Tech has helped, helped us put, put it together. It includes $10 million of total projects to pretty much show the need, hey, we need more, more than the $3 million. And it, it is going to be used for, for further funding packages. It does use some concepts from Malone and McBroom, and the intention was to show those segments that, some of them are pretty straightforward. Some of them we know, there's very little that needs to be done. There's some that need to be completely reworked and engineered, and we need to spend some engineering dollars to just make sure all the pieces fit together. And I, I probably could do a quick presentation or just get those segments down, like, from the Eleanor, so first of all, the Eleanor Sullivan Street, Main Street intersection needs to be completely reworked. And then from that, from that intersection, pretty much right across the street, up, so it's pretty straightforward what needs to happen there. And then from there to the Jordan Wilson Sullivan intersection, very, very straightforward. Sidewalks on both sides, on street parking, you know, that's, some of them, some of the other ones are more involved, and there's a lot of variables and what, what can happen. You know, some of it, talked about with Tom today is, you know, we've kicked around the idea during the traffic study about turning Sullivan two-way. My opinion, how Tom agrees, at this point, I don't see a reason to go two-way. The cost-benefit, the confusion, losing parking spaces, it works the way it is. There's an idea kicked around for pedestrian plaza and closing up access through, um, from Rochester Street and directing all the traffic down Eleanor. I'm not convinced, and that's not the intention of this funding package to do that. It's to, it's to fund some engineering to figure out what we do want to do.
Do we have all this on blueprints? What's gonna happen? Is there a set of blueprints that Sabago did?
We have a mix, we have a mix of concepts.
Five or six different concepts.
When are we gonna get a hide?
So that's part of, so, so, so that's part of, with this funding, the projects that we know, the, the projects that I would say are not controversial at all, that are just like, yeah, there's not, you're not gonna do anything on, on Sullivan Street other than put sidewalks, you know? And it's like, that's easy.
We're gonna put down cement, hot top, brick sidewalks?
Probably cement, I'd imagine, but it's up for discussion, I think. Sidewalk on both sides.
Yeah, no, I, I, you probably saw my email, I sent out earlier, is, uh, you know, it's something that I've been involved with right from the start, before as a selectman, with Envision Berwick, and, you know, there've been several concepts brought forward by different engineering firms that, I put, the nicest way I can put it is, they were designed by traffic engineers. They didn't think about people. And they were thinking about moving vehicles and things, and the big concern was with lights over in Summersworth and the backups in Summersworth and things, and, so there's a lot of things that were thrown around, and, um, as James said, some of them, like the intersection with School Street and Sawmill Hill and that, those are pretty straightforward and stuff. And the concepts, McBroom, or whatever the name is, had of closing off Rochester Street over in this side of the town hall and getting all that traffic to come around the town hall this way, is, I thought was absolutely insane. Is, when you look at the 18-wheelers just going this way around, just imagine them both coming at this intersection here, so. As James and I had a discussion earlier, and as he explained to me, is, those were put there just as a placeholder, more or less, to say, we're considering these, some changes here, but we haven't made any final plans. And that's what, the money that he's asking us to, to look at there, is to engineer it all so we have one plan.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
But one of the other plans
I thought that's why we had Sabago.
They help, well, yeah, they will, they will do that.
And we, so that the money we're paying them doesn't include that?
They, so, the applic, so the application that we had to submit, I would have never in my life been able to do that. It was like, I don't even know, 60 pages and all this. So that, they helped us, they, we paid them a little bit to get access to that $3 million. And then on the, once we get that money, a certain percentage of that money will be allocated towards engineering, which, that's why we picked Sabago Technics. To, we picked, we went on to bid for engineers saying, hey, we have $3 million, we need an engineer, to help engineer for those $3 million projects.
But yeah, that's one thing that we have been missing is an overall plan.
Right.
I thought we were gonna change the parking out here too, to angle parking? We talked about that.
It's one of the things we've talked about, and again, nothing's been, you know, put down on paper as, you know, the finals. That's one of the things we've talked about, again, nothing's been, you know, put down on paper as, you know, the final design, so.
There, there's some issues with backing up, I know on Rochester Street, there's an issue on backing up on state roads, I'm not sure if, if we're not, if we're not stuck to that, I'm, I'm with you, I mean, if we can, if we can throw, I used to be a big, you know, there's some benefits to having parallel parking, cause you can keep the street narrower, but I see angle parking working in a lot of different areas.
Here, on, on this street out here, I think it would work, it works good in Dover, the only problem in Dover is you have to, it's hard backing out the center of that.
Right, I was backing out today.
Other than that, it works well.
There's a skill to it.
And you're backing uphill, so.
Blind, so that's it, um, dig a hole once, we'll be meeting, um, we've been trying to nail down a day, I think Wednesday to eighteenth, we'll probably be at, in the evening.
This month?
This month, yep.
So the eighteenth?
Yep, it'll be, both, it'll be a hybrid meeting, so as the projects kind of come down the line, there'll be more, you know, things will become more crystallized. And then there is the, um, the Sawmill Hill School Street project is a million and a half, million and a half dollar project, um, that includes new sidewalks and alignment. The, um, Outfall project, that's fully funded, that's one point four million, and also, we're probably gonna get another grant for fifty thousand to build out Great Falls Park. So it'll all be happening around, you know, the next two to three years. And there's more, and there's more to go, City of Sanford, they did it, they pretty much exactly what we're doing, working with different engineers, different concepts, different projects, and then they went on top of that to get twenty-five million dollars. We can do that, like get another seven, I think.
Where are they, where are they using that?
All different neighborhoods and.
Oh, so that's must be where we got the job, okay, we picked up a big job there.
Right down, pretty much downtown, but it's, it spans ten, fifteen different streets.
Right, okay, yep.
Yep.
Including right in front of my apartment.
So as a follow-up, James, then, I don't know, a couple of months ago, we talked about, you're talking about a lot of different changes in the town, you're talking about a lot of different things going on. We talked about getting that sign, you gave us some quotes on some prices for getting a sign out here, uh, that we can move around and different entities can use. What did we ever do with that, did, oh, did we purchase one?
No.
And, or is it in this year's gonna be, you proposing it in this year's budget?
Put it in this year's budget, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Did you price one out?
Yeah, they, they range, I think the one that we need is, I forget the exact amount, but I think it's in the eleven thousand.
Yeah, it was up there, it was more than ten and I was kinda shocked by it.
But it's one, I've been talking with Chief, Chief Town, it's, they have like radar built into it, so it's something that could be multipurpose, and I talked with Chief Town about, it could be housed there as well.
Yeah, but things like, you know.
No parking during a snowstorm, we can change it, all sorts of, town meeting tonight, selectless meeting tonight.
Road closed, transfer station rates changing, the library having an event, I'm just saying, if the town owns it, then we can let various departments utilize it.
You and I discussed this before, James, but, um, I, I talked to you about, Steve used to send us, the week we weren't having a meeting, Steve would send us an email, is that right, Tom?
He, he tried, most times, yeah, we'd get a regular update.
I found it very helpful, to fire up my brain.
Sure.
If you could do that.
Okay, I know, you've asked me about that before.
Anything else, James?
That's, that's all, sorry.
Alright, uh, we have no select board communications. Accounts payable. Alright. We have a payroll warrant number forty-two from December twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, in the amount of eighty-five thousand, four hundred, twenty-eight dollars and eleven cents. We have payroll warrant number forty-three from December twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, in the amount of nineteen hundred, fifty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. We have payroll warrant number forty-four from January fifth, twenty-twenty-three, in the amount of seventy-four thousand, seven hundred, sixty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. We have accounts payable warrant number forty, uh, payroll warrant number forty-five, uh, from January twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, in the amount of ninety-six thousand, one hundred, eighty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. And we have the accounts payable warrant number forty-six from, uh, January tenth, twenty-twenty-three, in the amount of one million, forty-five thousand, nine hundred, fifty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. I make the motion that we pay our bills. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Bill's paid. We have no new business, no quitclaim deeds or installments, we have a abatement and a penalty, so, Alex, is that you?
Hi, how you doing?
Hey, Alex.
Alright, so we do have an abatement for, it's for Glenn Emery, uh, it's tax map R fifty-nine dash five at one seventy-five, Blackberry Hill Road. Um, the subject property is currently designated as a commercial warehouse on a parcel of land consisting of two point four one acres. Uh, the building was previously used for warehousing purposes through a grandfathered commercial status. The business closed, restricting the ability to be used commercially and making it part of the R three zone. This was discovered through a December third, twenty-twenty planning board meeting, when the owner approached the planning board, uh, about renting the space out. Uh, the board discussed having a workshop to create an amendment to the current zoning, it was, uh, eventually decided that there was no interest from the planning board in pursuing the change any further. Um, with that, the structure should be changed from a commercial warehouse to a residential. It is recommended that an abatement be granted in the amount of one thousand, three dollars and ninety-two cents.
So, so, excuse me, but what the hell, so the guy's got an empty warehouse, David, he can't use? That's bullshit. It's bullshit. We shouldn't, that shouldn't be happening. I don't know, uh, give him the abatement, but I don't think that should be happening, that's, that's wrong.
The planning board makeup's a little different, I can, uh, yeah, like, I mean, I can talk to planning and.
It doesn't look confusing, he bought a, he bought a warehouse and now he can't.
No, he had it, he had, they had a farm, a business down Blackberry Hill.
There was a lag in, um.
Turn it into, you know, warehouse, they used to keep farm equipment in it anyway. It was grandfathered farm equipment, that's what they did.
Well, farm, farm equipment's not allowed use there.
Right, they used to sell farm equipment, but they don't anymore there.
Yeah, and the business closed, and, so, there was essentially a gap in between businesses.
Yeah, but you don't want.
The grandfathered status.
Was eliminated.
Was ended, yeah.
So the new owner bought it?
No, the original owner.
Same owner?
Same owner.
He just wants a different business.
He wants to rent it out.
It's, it's been, it's been closed as a ware, it was Hartley Emily's, no, no.
Blackberry Hill Farm Equipment.
Right, Blackberry Hill Farm Equipment, years and years ago, um, and his, his son Glenn inherited it, and he kept it as a warehouse for a while, I know he kept stuff in there for quite a while, but I don't know when he stopped using it as the warehouse.
So what's he doing, turn the house, tar, tear it down and put up two houses? He better off having a business there, we get taxes coming in.
Well, yeah, I don't, I, I don't know, I don't know anything about.
That has to change, James, we gotta figure that one out.
No.
I brought it for it, I wasn't planning it, I wasn't planning it at the time, I brought it for.
Guy wants to have a business and he can't.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I can bring it for it again.
Yeah, let us know when the meeting is. We'll talk to him.
Uh, I will make a motion. I'll make a motion that the, uh, recommended abatement of one thousand, three dollars and ninety-two cents be granted.
I'll, I'll second the motion for discussion.
Alright, any further discussion?
Yes, so my question then is, if we grant this, does that mean if he comes back before the planning board, that it can't go back to being?
Yeah, it can't go back.
It can't go back?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we just need a, um, a land use, basically, in the land use ordinance table, there's, actually there's specific performance standards that would have allowed it. Because what we didn't want to do is open up to large-scale, uh, warehouse and distribution in the R three zone, is basically was the issue. There's, I, there, the, it's all written there, ready to go for like loads.
It's a small plot of land, it's a small bit, small little building, there's no way they're gonna go large-scale anything. It's just too small of a site, and the building's too small, the man should be taken care of.
So then, that, that brings our question, so we agree to this abatement, that means he cannot do, he cannot rent it out, he can't do anything like that unless he goes back before the planning board?
Right, he's gotta go anyway before the planning board to do it, and if he goes back to warehouse, then we, the abatement goes, next?
Regardless, as of April first, twenty-twenty-two, he couldn't do anything commercially with it, so, that's what the, the tax bill was based on.
Right.
The past year's tax bill.
Right.
Yeah, because even if he were to go before planning at that point, then we would need to actually make an amendment to the land use ordinance to.
To change it, okay, alright.
So you have that ability, right, so.
Okay, sorry, I just, I need to clarify it.
As long as he doesn't start doing anything funky on it, I'm okay with it.
Alright, all of those in favor?
I didn't get a second.
That was London.
Maybe I missed it, okay, thank you.
Alright, and farmland penalty.
Alright, we also have a farmland penalty for tax map R forty dash four dash one, um, on Durant Road. Uh, property owner Brown Industrial Group acquired the property from Esther Goodrich Puffer and Adam S. Puffer on eight twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, through book one nine one zero one, page two twenty-nine. Uh, this lot no longer qualifies for the farmland program due to the size, a penalty must be issued. You can see the attached farmland penalty calculation sheets, um, calculated pursuant to the, uh, thirty-six M R S subsection one 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 two dash the dash three. Um, therefore, it is recommended that you approve a farmland penalty in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred, forty-five dollars and ten cents, uh, to the property owners for the removal of a two point one acre from farmland classification.
Alex, are they already aware that this will be coming?
Yep, they were notified, uh, la, last week, yep.
The dollar amount or amount?
We, uh, notice went out in the mail last week, uh.
You had a dollar amount? Yeah, dollar amount.
Yeah, with the dollar amount on, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the farmland penalty in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred, forty-five dollars and ten cents to, uh, tax map, uh, zero four zero dash four dash one.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Patty, this, uh, this one also has Ed Gignier and Cam on here.
Oh, good. We'll switch it. We must have used the old one, Alex.
Thanks, Alex.
Yes, thank you very much, thank you for waiting so long, I appreciate it.
No problem, thank you, have a good night.
Alright, um, second public comment, the public has left us. Um, there's no executive session tonight. Just gonna ask Patty a question. Any other business knowledge of items?
I know, I'm just gonna ask that, okay.
Patty, this year, yeah, we have two select board positions that are gonna be open.
In June.
In June, so, we need.
I don't think, have you made up your mind?
Of course he's gonna, what are you talking about?
I'm back on the line now myself. But I don't, you know.
Well, uh, pretty soon, you're gonna have to take out nomination papers and all that stuff and.
We got about two left, James.
I'm just throwing it out there to the public to make sure that they know that this is coming, so that if somebody's out there that's eager to volunteer and wants to be part of this wonderful program.
This is a paid position.
It's a paid position, it pays about twenty-five dollars a meeting, I think, something like that. It's really, it's really worthwhile, I promise you.
Stop breaking it down by the minute.
Don't break it down by the hour, you'd be depressed. Yeah, um, alright, so, also, uh, there, there was no form for Josh in here, for the appointment for Josh.
Yeah, I thought that was the first one.
There should have been one.
Oh, you got one?
Yeah, I thought it was the first one we signed.
Jeremy, Marie, Elise, Cyrus, yeah, there's not one for, for Josh. There's one in the, in the book, but there's not one in here, so.
Oh, maybe that's where I saw it in the book.
You can pull the book and sign that, that's fine.
When it says copy?
Yeah, it says copy at the top, is that okay?
You guys are being difficult.
Alright.
You know what happens if we don't correct this tonight, you're gonna come back to us next week and be like.
You'll come in here and get this.
Alright, um, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second that motion.
All those in favor? Good night, folks.
Thank you, everybody.